Okay.
The, the time has come. For the Monday, December first, Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman. Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
We have a quorum. Item two, all rise for the invocation. Pastor Surla, thank you. Immediately following the invocation will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eridania Solar. Many people know me as Pastor Eddie. My husband, Alex Solar, and I, we passed our vertical encounter. And it is really an honor to be here tonight among all of you. It's really, really an honor. So tonight, I would like to read a Bible verse, and although I know everybody does not share the same faith and believes I do, I just invite you to be open that there is a greater being out there that cares about what's happening in our city and in this meeting tonight. The scripture says in Proverbs 2:6, "For the Lord grant wisdom; from his mouth comes knowledge and understanding." Knowledge is just information. Understanding is how to apply the information, but wisdom is when to apply that information. So now I would like to pray, and if you could just bow your heads and close your eyes with me this evening. Lord, we thank you for this city and for every leader and public servant present today. Thank you for the privilege of gathering to make decisions that impact the people and our families in this community. We acknowledge the responsibility carried in this room, and we ask for your guidance. Grant us unity, not sameness, but to share commitment to seek the good of our neighbors. Help us listen with respect, speak with honor, and work together with a spirit of peace. Let every conversation and every decision be shaped by humility and genuine desire to serve. Help every voice be heard with dignity. Let respect govern the space. That we treat each other with love and respect, knowing, Father, that we are created in your image. I pray that you remove division and you remove the pride in the room and let understanding take its place. Father, give us wisdom from above, wisdom that is pure, peace, loving, and help us have mercy and love for one another. Give us discernment to see what is right, what is fair, and what best serves the families in our city. Guide our thoughts and our perspectives and the decisions that will be made tonight. Bless our streets, our school, our businesses, our neighborhoods, and our homes. Protect our children, strengthen us as a family, as a unity, and watch over us. May your presence and your peace be among us. In Jesus' name we pray these things, and everybody said, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at item number 1B, mayor's comments. Well, happy December month. It's, uh, it's an incredible week. It was an incredible weekend in Waukegan. I want to start off by recognizing the amazing snow fighters of Waukegan Public Works. Uh, they worked around the clock to keep the streets of Waukegan safe and clean. I stopped by the Snow Command Center throughout the weekend to encourage, uh, to encourage and more importantly, to thank them. I can tell you it wasn't easy, for them, of course, but they make us all look good and made it all look easy. Also, I'd like to recognize the dispatchers who took the calls for help during the winter storm. Uh, I keep a radio with, with me at all times, and I'm turned off about ten, and I tell you, our dispatches do an amazing job of making sure when a call comes in, they get the right information to dispatch to our first responders. It was all hands on deck, and everyone truly helped this city get through its first official snow don't call it a storm, right? If it was a snowstorm, we give it a snowstorm. But this is the Midwest now. That's really wasn't a snowstorm. A sno- I like that, a snowy situation. Because of the hard work of Waukegan Public Works, we were able to come, come together to officially kick off the holiday season. We lit Waukegan's holiday tree in Jack Benny Plaza, and we celebrated the season with some sweet bread, hot chocolate at our Waukegan Public Library. And of course, Santa Claus and his elves were there to help with the festivities. I want to thank the Waukegan Park District, Waukegan Township, certainly our Waukegan Public Library, and of course, our Waukegan Chamber of Commerce for their partnership in making sure that we continue in that tradition of lighting our tree, even under inclement weather. And of course, rains, sleet, or snow, the tree must be lit, correct? It was a bit chilly, but a special moment for our community. Apex Award. Apex Award for the utility category was awarded, was awarded to Baxter and Woodman Bowler Design Build for their incredible work at our Waukegan Water Plant. Uh, Burris Equipment was named the 2025 Supplier Member of the Year. It was also an honor to be there to congratulate these amazing businesses in person. Their success continues to shine a positive light on our Waukegan and our growing business community. I also want to give a shout out to Antonio Dominguez, our director of our water utility and his staff with their work with these contractors at our water plant. I think we're right now in about our sixth or seventh million, I'm sorry, sixth or seventh year into sixteen to twenty million dollar upgrades at, um, and I'm gonna say this, in one of the oldest water plants in Lake County. I think we're over a hundred, right? Over a hundred years at that water plant, everybody. But everything in there is eighty-five percent new. All right? I'm also proud of the business that call Waukegan home. Tonight, I want to recognize several Waukegan businesses that receive awards from the, uh, from the Great Lakes Construction Association. The Great Lakes Association, uh, Great Lakes Construction Association promotes union construction and is the leading trades association for commercial construction industry in the Great Lakes region. Bowler Construction and Company received the 2025 General Contractor Member of the Year. And even more special, Bob Bowler of Bowler Construction Company received the Robert W. McGruder Lifetime Achievement. So let's give it up to those Waukegan companies for what they've done to make sure that our community stands out. Um, my last comments, I'm going to ask our Public Works Director to come up, and he's just gonna give you about two minutes, two or three minutes of, uh, what our operation looks like on a snow day and how you all can help. Chris?
All right. Good evening, council. Thank you, mayor. Um, they're gonna show the slides in a few seconds. It's just a snippet of how our operation works and, um, how things move forward with, uh, with our Snow Command. Oh, all right, here we go. All right. Right here, you can see you got the guys, uh, loading up with gas and getting ready to, uh, go out. Uh, we have one truck right there in our vehicle maintenance shop. The guys are checking it over, making sure that the wiring and the hoses and everything of that nature is hooked up and, uh, ready to go when the, uh, when the worker goes out. Next slide, please. Here we have the operation where our loader loads up the salt into the trucks and, um, so that they could go out and, uh, get ready to, uh, spread salt. Next slide, please. We got them lined up, so when they come in, they line up around the bend to come and, uh, get in front of their loader machine, and, uh, he loads them up with salt. We have sixty odd trucks. We have, um, six-wheelers. We have one tons, like that white one right there that we load up. They do pretty much the circles, dead ends and things of that nature. And, um, they help out when, um, you know, you can't get through some streets where, uh, cars are double parked. Next slide, please. Again, they're just lining up for here where we go out and we do a tandem plowing. Some streets, our main thoroughfares, you'll see three trucks together, some you may see four lined up to, uh, cover our, uh, main thoroughfares when, uh, we get so much snow on the ground and we want to clear them up so our traffic can, uh, continue to move. Next slide, please. Here, you got one of the machines that you guys, uh, let us purchase, and we're using it to clean out the, uh, Jack Benny Center with the snow so we can get ready for the, uh, the tree lighting. Next slide, please. Ah, here we is right here where we got snow plow truck going around cars, trying to maneuver and, um, spread the salt and get the, uh, get the street clean. On the other side, you see where they went through. You have cars there that look like they've been there for three weeks, but it's only been two days. All right? So we need you guys' help. We need you guys' help to clear the streets with your cars so that we can, uh, continue to, uh, make the street clean. We would like to have both sides of the street to look like the one side instead of having the cars on, um, parked there and just sitting there. Next slide, please. Here he is right here. Now, you tell me, those big trucks you see, how are they gonna get down through there? All right? So when you call and say that your street hasn't been plowed, that's the reason why, right there. How are they gonna get down through there? All right? We need your help. All right? Alderman, we need your help. All right? So, I mean, we go down through there, we nick something, you want a brand-new car. So, but we're not going down through there. But, um, we have other trucks that can go through there, but it's not gonna make, it's not gonna do the difference. It's not gonna clean it up the way that it's supposed to. So again, we need you guys' help in, uh, in this instance, all right? Next slide, please. Here we go. With our, uh, symbol, our shield, uh, for Waukegan and, uh, rebuild Waukegan. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, have a question.
Alderman, Alderman Martinez.
Yeah, I just want to comment. You guys did an absolutely great job in my ward. Um, but it is kind of concerning when you got two vehicles and you guys can't do your job. What is it that we can do, or what did we do in the past, and maybe we need to bring that implement, that, uh, implementation back, because that, it is a problem. And this is just the beginning of winter, and it can only get worse from here. What is it that the public can do? We know what they can do, but maybe we, what was the old way of doing things? And, you know, what, what is that we can do as aldermen to try to bring that back?
Well, during your alderman time reminder, that's all you gotta do. Remind them during your alderman time, you get a nice good break in the, um, in the, um, with the weather, and you have time on your hand, go around through those. We'll give you certain areas in your wards that you could go through and say, hey, how are we doing over here? You know, so that's what we, that's what we need from you guys.
Might have done, Alderman Donaworth?
Yeah, just in the old days when I worked for the police department, nineteen eighty-one to two thousand and eleven, thirty years of service with the city of Waukegan. When we had a snow, we hit the road and whatever vehicles were parked illegally were towed.
Oh, there you go.
Every single time, because we let these guys do their job, and then the streets were always clean. And if you had alternate parking problems on that night too, those were towed too. So we towed them, and people learned they didn't park that way anymore.
Maybe there's something we should revisit, um, but my main concern also is you can't even get emergency vehicles through there. What happens to one has a heart attack? How, how is the emergency vehicle gonna get through there? So we also have to be considerate of that also. So I, I think we should revisit this whole conversation and do what our due diligence and see how we can, uh, come up with a better solution. Maybe towing needs to be done.
Yeah, well, what we're gonna do, we'll work with, uh, with, um, with both our, with all of our first responders and come up with a, with a, with a process that would certainly be beneficial for everybody, for the entire city. Um, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, mayor.
And before he takes his seat, I know Antonio wants us aldermen to remind you that we would be, we would be replacing a water main in North Avenue in Glen Flora, and that'll take you all the way to Greenwood, correct? So it'll be North Avenue in Glen Flora going north to Glen, to Greenwood.
Greenwood.
That's probably seventh, is that sixth, seventh ward?
Sixth and seventh.
Sixth and seventh ward. Now it's going, it's, we're starting that pretty soon, correct? Next week? All right.
Entire water main replacement, is that it?
That's it.
Correct, with lead service.
With lead service.
With lead, I'm sure.
Yeah. We're gonna have some fun time.
North Ave, Glen Flora to Greenwood.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes my comments. And, uh, item number two, two A. Resolution two five dash R dash three zero four honoring the life and legacy of Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Jr. I had a motion, a motion by Alderman Newsom.
Second by Alderman Turner.
Second by Alderman Turner. Any questions to the motion? I'm gonna have to ask the clerk to read the motion, I mean, I'm sorry, read the resolution, and then we'll let you. All right. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty-five R three zero four honoring the life and legacy of Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Jr. Whereas Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Jr. was born on October twenty-seventh, nineteen thirty-three in Waukegan, Illinois to the late Mr. Arthur Lee and Addie Wallace Devos Sr. And faithfully served his family and community with unwavering dedication and love. And whereas Reverend Devos' early years were marked by sacrifice as he left school to support his parents and siblings, embodying the values of hard work and responsibility instilled by his father, only to later return and complete his education. And whereas in nineteen forty-eight, Reverend Devos met Catherine Garrett, with whom he shared over sixty-five years of devoted marriage, raising thirteen biological and four additional children with compassion, hospitality, and an enduring commitment to family and community. Whereas Reverend Devos was widely recognized as a spiritual patriarch and mentor, extending his love and guidance as a father figure and advocate to countless youth, congregants, and neighbors, demonstrating boundless hospitality by opening his home to those in need. And whereas Reverend Devos dedicated himself to public service, both inside and outside the church, including two decades of employment with the North Chicago School District, decades of community advocacy, and consistent presence at city council meetings, earning the trust and respect of all whom he served. And whereas Reverend Devos' entrepreneurial spirit led to the establishment of Catherine's Diner and Catherine's Fine Food Restaurant, fixtures in North Chicago and Waukegan that anchored his family and the community and provided employment and mentorship to young people. And whereas drawn by deep faith, Reverend Devos was ordained in nineteen sixty-eight and served as pastor for over sixty years, founding and shepherding congregations, ministering selflessly to the sick, imprisoned, hungry, and bereaved, and offering comfort and hope to the most vulnerable. And he completed his ministerial service as pastor at Mount Bethel Healing Temple at two two nine South Avenue in Waukegan. And whereas Reverend Devos faced adversity and personal loss with fortitude, his ministry rooted in unwavering faith and obedience to God, always striving to serve others and uplift the community. And whereas in recognition of his profound community impact, the North Chicago Mayor and City Council designated a section of Christian Avenue as the Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Way in twenty sixteen. And whereas Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Jr. entered eternal rest on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, leaving behind a legacy of service, integrity, and love that endures through his children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, great-great-grandchildren, extended family, congregation, and all who were touched by his compassion. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby honor the life and legacy of Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Jr., recognizing his extraordinary contributions as a pastor, father, mentor, advocate, and community leader. And be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Reverend Devos as an enduring token of the community's gratitude, respect, and admiration for his extraordinary spiritual leadership, steadfast family devotion, and unwavering service to others. Presented this first day of December, twenty twenty-five.
There's a, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passing, Carrie.
Can I, I'm sorry if I get a little emotional. Just bear with me, please. Did you guys wanna do this first, or, okay?
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valerie Devos. And I am deeply honored to stand before you as the daughter of Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Jr. Today is not just special for our family, it is meaningful for this entire community and for every life my father touched with his kindness, his wisdom, and unwavering faith. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mayor of Waukegan, Mayor Sam Cunningham, and the City Council for recognizing my father's legacy, my cousin Edith Newsom. The act of recognition means more than words can ever express. It shows that the seeds he planted, seeds of hope, healing, faith, prayer, and most of all, love, truly took roots in this community. My father believed that ministry was not limited to the pulpit. To him, ministry was every conversation that he had, every prayer, every visit, every person who needed someone to listen to, he was always there. He often said, "If you can lift up just one person, you have served God." And that is how he lived his entire life, lifting people one heart at a time. Growing up in a family of seventeen, and I was the sixth of the seventeen, but growing up, I saw firsthand what his commitments were like. Whether it was late-night phone calls, hospital visits, youth programs, or community outreach, he always showed up. He was always there. He was a shepherd to so many sheep, a voice of encouragement and a pillar of strength. He taught us that real leadership is service, and real faith is action. So he never just talked about it, but he showed it in everything that he did. Today, as we dedicate his legacy, I am filled with gratitude, not just because he's being honored, but because his work continues. His vision was always bigger than himself. He believed that this city, our city, has purpose, potential, and promise. And he believed that with love, faith, and unity, we all can build something truly great together. To the city officials, community leaders, church members, friends, and family, we've got to keep his hope and his memory alive. Thank you. And to those who continued the ministry he started, James and Vincent, the rest of the family and friends, thank you. And to everyone here today, your presence is proof that his legacy lives on. My prayer is that this space becomes more than dedication, that it becomes a place of healing, gathering, and inspiration, a reminder that one life lived with purpose can truly make a big difference. On behalf of our family, we say thank you for honoring our father, Reverend Arthur Lee Devos Jr. May his legacy continue to shine, not only in this place, but in our hearts and in the work that we do moving forward. Thank you and God bless you, but before I close, and I know I'm not up here a while, but I want to say, Mayor Cunningham, thank you so much. You were a true inspiration also to my father. He spoke of you all the time. Your greatness, all that you dedicated your life to and for. Um, for instance, we worked together on the Broadway project. Um, we worked tirelessly, he and I, on the Broadway cleanup project when I was an alderman. So I want to say thank you because of him and his resilience. It is still clean today. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Well, for me first, I've been knowing Mr. Devos since I was Carmen. Never knew his name was Arthur. But that's a testament of the respect that I had for him. It was always Mister. Uh, even though he was a reverend, it was always Mister Devos. And I was just telling Valerie, you know, as I grew up and became an alderman, and, uh, I would see your mom and dad. They never parked on South Avenue. They always parked on Utica, MLK. Before they were getting, going to the church, they would sit in the car for a while, what was going on? Talking, eating, whatever. And, and that was, you know, I, I look back now, those are kind of terrorist memories. And, uh, being now mayor, then was alderman, as he watched me grow and develop, always kind of talked to you every now and then. He was always young man. Young man. And, and, uh, I, I hope I don't offend anybody when I say this, but he was always looking out for young black boys.
Yes, he was.
Always. That was his, you know, his, his, his passion for, as I could see it right there on South Avenue in Utica. Always young black boys, education, manners, dignity, respect. That was his thing. Unapologetic for it. And, you know, to have known him ninety-two?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two years. Ninety-two years, folks. You couldn't tell the man age probably passed, at least for me. Same face, same walk, same smile. That is not easy to do. But before I get emotional, it's hard to say you love two cities, particularly the Warhogs and them Bulldogs.
Yeah. But he did.
But he did.
He did.
And he will come and talk to a council meeting, whether it be North Chicago or Waukegan, the same way, with the same love and conviction that he had for young men being successful. And of course, you know you got to hit the church. If you ain't been inside the church, he ain't got you yet. But thank you, folks, for being here. And here is his, his niece, who's, who's the alderman and who wants to speak.
Thank you. I had the privilege of calling him Uncle Junior. And he was always Uncle Junior to me for almost sixty-nine years. And I had the privilege, as we kids, we grew up across the street from our cousins. They were our friends, our playfriends, our everything. And it was a privilege to do that. Every time I would encounter my uncle, he was always the same, always the same, always a smile, always full of love, always full of grace, always thankful. Our conversations, he would call me, and I missed Thanksgiving because I would always get a call. Our conversations could be long or short, but the one thing that I'm going to miss the most is he never got off the phone without a prayer from me. Never, ever. And I'm going to miss that the most. We always ended our conversation with a prayer. So I thank you to the city for honoring him, his life and his legacy, and we'll have to make sure we carry it on. Thank you, family, for showing up.
All right, family, we, we, this is the group picture. Now, council, this whole side's about to get up now. Come on. All right, thank you. Thank you, Devos family. You guys take care. God bless. Happy holidays to you. Yes. Item 2B, proclamation, recognizing December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day in Waukegan. There's a-
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Bolton. Questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passing, Carrie.
Would you like me to read that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have a proclamation recognizing December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day. Whereas World AIDS Day, observed annually on December 4th, unites communities worldwide in the fight against HIV/AIDS, support those living with the virus, and honors the lives lost to AIDS-related illnesses. And whereas more than thirty-nine million people globally, over one million in the United States are living with HIV, underscoring the continued need for awareness, prevention, and access to care. And whereas the City of Waukegan is committed to reducing health disparities and ensuring equitable access to healthcare resources for all residents. And whereas the Lake County Health Department provides comprehensive HIV/AIDS services through its HIV/AIDS Care Program and Need-to-Know Lake County STI Program, offering confidential testing, PrEP and PEP services, medical care, case management, counseling, and supportive services regardless of insurance status or ability to pay. And whereas these programs work to prevent new infections, reduce stigma, and help individuals living with HIV remain healthy, supported, and connected to essential care. And whereas World AIDS Day reinforces the importance of community engagement, education, and partnerships that promote public health and strengthen the well-being of Waukegan residents. Now, therefore be it resolved that Mayor Samuel D. Cunningham Jr. and the members of the Waukegan City Council do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day in the City of Waukegan, and encourage all residents to participate in activities that advance awareness, prevention, compassion, and support for those affected by HIV/AIDS, adopted this first day of December, 2025. And I believe we have the Executive Director of the Lake County Health Department here, Mr. Chris Hoff. In addition, we have Mr. Greg Brown and Robert O'Pueg from Waukegan Friends. At least those are the ones I saw.
Good evening, council. My name is Chris Hoff. I'm the Still Newish Executive Director of the Lake County Health Department, started in March, so it's a pleasure to meet you. We want to thank you for taking time to recognize this important day. This is World AIDS Day, December 1st is actually World AIDS Day. It says a lot that you would take time out of your schedule to recognize this. HIV has been a terrible epidemic that has affected the entire world. This is the first time in almost thirty years that the federal government is not doing anything to recognize that day. We are proud to be here in Waukegan today to celebrate with you, celebrate the progress that's been made in helping to keep people alive and healthy, to honor the lives of those lost and those affected by HIV, and to commit to the ongoing work of public health and healthcare in the community, working together to address diseases like this, and especially HIV on World AIDS Day. So here today with an esteemed group of people and appreciate your recognition. Thank you.
One for you.
Okay, thank you.
And-
Waukegan Friends.
Would you like to say something? There you go.
I would really like to thank the City Council and the City of Waukegan and Mayor Cunningham for this recognition. This means a lot. It's a lot of the work that we've been doing to make Waukegan one of the most inclusive cities that we know. And this really helps us to honor those that have been affected by this horrible situation, and for those also that are here that are Waukeganites that are living with it today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sure.
We brought invitations to our World AIDS Day event this Saturday, December 8th, four to eight p.m. Anybody is welcome to come. There's flyers out there.
December 6th.
Saturday. Would love to have you participate. We'd welcome you to participate and welcome you all to join us.
All right. With that being said, it's, it's photo time. Getting my steps today, huh? Item 3, 2C. There's a motion by Alderman Martinez, second by Alderman Donaworth approving the appointment of Todd Johnson to the Civil Service Commission. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passing, Carrie. Item 2D, motion by Alderman Hayes in your ward, sir. This young lady's in your ward, sir. Or, motion by Alderman Hayes, second by Alderman Felix, to approve the appointment of America Acosta to the Waukegan Police Pension Board. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passing, Carrie. I saw Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, stand up, raise your hand, everybody can see it. All right, thank you. America, did I see America in here? Uh-huh. America. I, I've been knowing America for about thirty years. We worked at the fruit market together. Alderman Hayes at Tenth and Lewis. That's it. We'll get her up in here, though. Thank you. Item 3, audience time. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir. We have a number of people to speak to, to speak with us tonight. I'm going to name off the first six. Shamika Furlough, Mike Mueller, Gabriela Garcia, Armando Pina, Amy Grossman, and Joe Kopsick. That's Shamika Furlough, Mike Mueller, Gabriela Garcia, Armando Pina, Amy Grossman, and Joe Kopsick. Go ahead, line up on the east side of the room, be ready to go, state your name, and I got the time when you start talking.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Shamika Furlough. I am a lifelong Waukegan resident and voter. I've been an employee of the City of Waukegan for twenty-four years and a member of SEIU for, SEIU 73 for many of those years. I stand before you representing the Waukegan Police Department Records Division. We have seven union members, five of which are bilingual. I am here today to ask that the city consider paying us what we are worth and paying people for the skills they bring to the job. Why should we accept a lower raise this year than we did each of the last two years? We have seen other public sector employees who work in Waukegan receive raises of three percent or better, and yet we are expected to accept less. How does the city expect to attract and retain talent with wage increases that do not even cover the cost of living increases? Lastly, the City of Waukegan has been vigilant in letting the Latino community know the city will fully back and protect them during these frightening and eye-opening times. But what about, what about our bilingual employees, who we are, sorry, who are the first point of contact with the community that makes up at least eighty percent of the foot traffic in City Hall, and thirty percent of those people need translation? Not offering to compensate people that bring a skill to the job seems wrong. And this city actually agrees because you do offer a language stipend for our police officers. Now, I'm not saying that we should get the same as the police, but the City of Elgin, with a Latino population of fifty-four thousand plus, offer it to their people in our job classification. And Waukegan has a Latino population of fifty-three thousand plus. Mayor Cunningham and the council members, what we are asking for is not unreasonable. We're, we're all here at the, at the same time, all the time, and, and that we are vital part of the city and valued by the city. Please treat us fairly and equally. We are just asking that your actions match your words. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Mueller.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Cunningham, City Council members, city leadership. My name is Mike Mueller. I'm here today speaking on behalf of Brandy Akim, who couldn't be here today because she got snowed in when she left for the holiday and just made it home. She is a city employee and has been a city employee on and off since 1996. She wants me to speak here tonight, not just for her, but for all the employees across the departments who continue to show up every day with dedication, professionalism, despite uncertainty. City employees bring a wide range of skills to their jobs, skills that their coworkers may not have, that the city relies on often heavily. Yet many of those employees are not compensated for the additional expertise they provide. These skills do not just benefit individual departments, they keep the city running safely, efficiently, and effectively. They ensure your residents receive the level of service that the residents expect and deserve. At the same time, the cost of living has only gone in one direction, up. Prices have increased for groceries, gas, utilities, housing, everything. Employees are doing more, covering more duties, and for those departments that are still understaffed, taking on more responsibility and are still struggling to keep up. We are not asking for anything unreasonable. We are asking for fairness, for recognition, and for respect. It should not take, it should not be difficult to acknowledge the real contributions that the city employees make. It should not be acceptable for workers to fall behind financially while continuing to hold this city together. We are looking forward to moving, to, to, we are, we are anticipating moving forward in good faith quickly and constructively, so that employees, your employees that work in this building and that building over there that can't be here today because they are currently taking 911 calls, we are asking, we are looking forward to working with you to make sure that those employees can continue to serve this community with pride, stability, and dignity. Thank you.
Gabriela Garcia. Go ahead, Ms. Gabby.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and council members. My name is Gabriela Garcia, and I am here tonight representing the clerical techs in the Water Department. I am here today to ask that the employees covered under the SEIU 73 contract be treated fairly and equitably. As clerical techs, we are often the first point of contact for our residents, whether that is over the phone or face-to-face. We are the ones who listen to concerns, help navigate billing issues, explain water service procedures, and calm frustrated residents. We deal with situations that require patience, accuracy, and compassion. For the Latino residents whose primary language is Spanish, we serve an even greater role. As bilingual staff, we bridge a gap that would otherwise leave many residents confused and underserved. We do not just translate words, we translate context, emotions, and urgency. We make sure that every resident, regardless of language, receives clear guidance and fair treatment. That responsibility carries weight and helps our department operate more efficiently and more equitably. We are asking for a contract that matches the level of service we provide and the increasing demand placed on us. It needs to- It needs to keep up with the rising cost of living, the complexity of our work, and the value we add to the city. When wages do not keep up with the responsibilities of the job, morale suffers, retention becomes harder, and ultimately, the quality of service to residents is at risk. We are asking for fairness, we are asking for recognition of the work we do every day to support our department and our community, and our union representative. Mike has been our voice at the table advocating for a contract that reflects the importance of our role and responsibilities. We are not asking for anything excessive. We understand the city has a budget and duty to be responsible with taxpayer money. We are just asking to be treated fairly and equitably to the work we do and the values we add to the city of Waukegan. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Armando Pina, please. Armando Pina. Armando Pina.
Hello, good evening, guys. Well, I'm coming here again to ask you guys to vote for my application because last time I was supposed to be here on Monday, on the tour Monday, and I get totally confused because even I got a lot of stress things in myself, and also the immigration statute. But I wanted to see if you guys can reconcile that you voted. Aldermen, from, I know you said no, but I really need this for my organization to stay allied, to stay flow, because I got no funds to get. I know I do a small rifles, a small racing phones, I did like that I sell. It wasn't so well, but I need really you guys can help me to approve the licenses for the banquet hall that I apply. I know before the, on all the meetings, we get agreements for prove it to be supervising for every three months, the capacity, other people there agree on everything, but definitely I'm coming and I asking, I beg you guys to help me, help me, because I really need some funds to stay on flow in my organization. I'm looking for more sources, more stuff, but you know, it's not getting solo. And it's hard for me because, yes, you know, it's because, I don't know, maybe I'm not a good talker, I'm not a good person, or I don't know how they see me. And I listen, the person was recognized for many years. He was a pastor helping the community, and he laid legacy. So, that's what I see myself to do very good in Waukegan, to do very great, and have a legacy for what I do without any cause, without any profit, because everything what I do is, you know, by donations, by kindness, and that's what I'm looking for. You guys can reconcile my application and vote again, and you let me come in back. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Grossman from the library. Amy Grossman.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amy. I'm the deputy director of Waukegan Public Library, and I'm here today to share a few initiatives happening at your library this December. The library's Giving Tree is out in our front lobby all month to celebrate the holiday season. While supplies last, the library will be passing out winter hats, gloves, socks, and more for all ages in a variety of colors and sizes. If you're in need of warm winter accessories, please visit the library's annual Giving Tree. We're also excited to launch our new care cabinet at the library, which is coming soon. This cabinet will be stocked with personal hygiene and first aid items for community members to take whenever they need it, free of charge. If you're in need of personal care items, please feel free to visit the library to discreetly pick up these items, no questions asked. Finally, I am happy to announce the launch of the library's Winter Reading Program this December through February. All you have to do is read five books, and you get a free book to keep and a fun prize. It's as simple as that. Our winter newsletter should be hitting homes this week via the mail. If you want more information about any of our programs or special events, check out the mailer or visit our online calendar for more information. Lastly, I want to invite all families with young kids to our Noon Year's Eve party on December 31st. That's right, Noon Year's Eve at noon. We're going to have a ball drop, dance party, snacks, crafts, and a special story read by Mayor Cunningham, so we're excited for that. We hope to see you all at the library this holiday season. Stay warm. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kopsick.
Hi, I'm Joe Kopsick, eight-year Waukegan resident, born in Lake County. I wanted to start by issuing a correction and an apology. Waukegan City Council meeting videos are available on YouTube. They're just in the live section. I was incorrect saying that you guys have not been posting those, so my mistake. And I will watch those videos to see the aldermen's responses to public comments, as you advised two weeks ago. The last two times I was here, I spoke about trafficking of immigrants by ICE, but tonight I'd like to talk about the trafficking of children and separation of families by the Lake County court system and the social security system. When I spoke here about a month ago, I briefly mentioned that the women's shelter, a safe place, is not really a safe place because of Michael Strauss, who's one of the directors, but it turns out that he left two years ago, which is a good thing. What concerns me about Michael Strauss's presence running a women's shelter is that he, he's an attorney, is one of the key people standing in the way of getting a 50-50 default custody arrangement law in cases where there was no parental abuse passed through the Illinois legislature. That means that he, Michael Strauss, facilitates the breaking up of families through the law. A lot of people are fans of social security and want their retirement money or SSI, but what they don't tell us is that part of the social security system includes Social Security Act Title 4D Child Support and Title 4E Foster Care. Through these parts of social security, the federal government is effectively able to bribe the states with federal matching funds to go after parents who are delinquent on child support payments. This may seem like a worthy cause to some, but lawyers charge exorbitant fees while helping parents speak to their children over the phone. Many family courts, attorneys, judges, and guardians at Lightham are engaging in various types of misrepresentation in a way that effectively amounts to colluding to split families up by creating a system wherein the courts and lawyers and judges decide who has child custody more often than parents decides. The system has ruined the life of many people, most notably Cash Jackson, who ran for governor in 2018. He was prevented from affording, from being able to afford to raise his children because Attorney Sally Lichter charged him fifteen thousand dollars for two phone calls to his kids. He hasn't spoken to that child in ten years, not because he's a bad father or doesn't want to, because the state makes it unaffordable and expensive. He spent ten years in courts fighting for the right to see his children. He was never accused of abuse. His wife, on the other hand, hired attorney Raymond Allen Bolt, whose previous experience was defending a priest who committed statutory rape. These are the kind of people we have to represent, ex-spouses who want to gouge their husbands for money and brainwash their children into hating the other parent. And people like my father, Richard S. Kopsick, are also available to defend people accused of child molestation, because he abused me as a kid, his friend Scott Gibson pinched my ass at his pool parties and other kids, and their friend Steve McCollum defended multiple teachers at Lake Forest accused of child molestation. So, Lake County court system and social security, you got a huge mess in terms of pedophiles and friends of pedophiles on your hands in these court systems. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. The next group of people will be Mr. Rayon Edwards, Yajinia Briscoe, Christina Carroll, Margaret Carrasco, and Carlos Smith. Mr. Rayon Edwards, Yajinia Briscoe, Christina Carroll, Margaret Carrasco, and Carlos Smith. Go right ahead, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening, council. I hope you all enjoyed your Thanksgiving. First of all, I want to thank y'all. Looked like I was heard from the last meeting, and to see Pastor Devos honored today meant everything to me. Having said that, Alderman Newsome, I'm a little disappointed to know that that's family, because if that's family, dear, I expected you to be at that funeral with a resolution. You talked to the mayor often, I see you in pictures with the mayor often, you should have been on his heels about doing that. That was important to me, because in your comments today, Mayor, you talked about what Pastor Devos stood for. And as somebody born and raised on the South Side, having lived there most of my whole life, he was a hell of a mentor to me. He made a big difference for a lot of us that didn't have a father. We had a black man that we can go sit down and talk to, that looked like us, that understood us, and that taught us with love. Now, tonight, I want to talk about you Latino aldermen. Y'all are pathetic and pitiful. Every time I see a Latino come up here to speak about something, y'all ain't talked about none of those issues. Y'all ain't even been on the city about having a translator up here. But all y'all make sure y'all friends got their liquor licensing done. Right? Y'all fought for that. You came in blazing, oh, we not giving the clerk no raise. Y'all made all of those things important. You put this big old long post up, "When ICE Got You," Martinez, but it wasn't no big long post before they touched you. Nothing was said. And it's so sad, because y'all have a big portion of this community, and it's three of y'all up there that's supposed to represent the Latino community, and y'all ain't said nothing. And although I don't agree with a lot with this mayor, because I'm going to get him too, but they come up here and they putting all the pressure up on him, and they ain't said nothing to y'all. Why not? What are y'all doing? None of the information that's out there is in Spanish? Y'all just sitting there for nothing, for absolutely nothing. So, getting up on Facebook with all that sob story, we don't even care to hear it. We really don't. ICE should have grabbed you and dragged you up out of here like they was doing the rest of these people. It's really pathetic that y'all is not representing. And Mr. Felix, whatever you got to say, my number is 847-414-8451. But as a professional and as an alderman that's sitting up here at this diocese, when people are talking, you should shut up and listen. You really should. It's real disrespectful, because this is our meeting, and this seems to be the only time we could come here and get our gripe out. And to see y'all sitting up there all on phones and side-biting and talking while people talking, that is so disrespectful, but I'm going to remember that at election time, because it's time for you to go.
Thank you, sir. Yajinia Briscoe.
Good evening, council. So, if you look throughout the community, it's a lot of information about rebuild Waukegan, right? We have to think about truly what does that mean? I mean, we're getting the roads done, yay, we're getting things done, yay, but we also have to think about the community. What truly are we building as far as this community is concerned? Throughout, not just Waukegan, and sometimes I think that people live here in Waukegan, you have a closed mindset. You need to open, open your mind. There are a lot of other cities that surround Waukegan that look at Waukegan. We want businesses to come here, right? So, when doing that, we have to think about, when you guys are approving things, you are proving what this city is going to look like. When you are approving all these liquor licenses here in Waukegan, you have to think about, during your time here, how many liquor licenses have you approved since you've been here? Truly, what does this, what does this community look like? I venture all the way to Highland Park, Volo, Penosha, and I have friends all over, and they look at what we're doing, believe it or not. And when they think about, when they talk about, and I talk about this with them, the number of liquor licenses that we have here, it's a lot. And so, we have to think about how are we being viewed as this community? You guys are setting the tone, because you guys are the ones that are approving these things. So, you guys are setting the tone as far as how this city looks, because you are approving this. I don't know if you think about that, but you have to think about, while you're here, this is the community that you are creating. And some of my friends in Highland Park call this the Wild, Wild West. I'm embarrassed. I live here. I've been here thirty years. Think about when you are approving, when you're making decisions, it's just not for, you know, Waukegan. Think about how we're viewed outside of Waukegan when you make your decision here. That's one. My second point is that way back on May 23rd, the issue in the news, son, was about what Felix had said, what Felix had done, and I'll just read it real quick in my last fifty-two minutes. The person has said Felix stated that the parade had been promised to another individual, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, there's, I had sent a note to, I had emailed the council here, because at the end, the corporation council, I think Sam had said he had given some information, or they gave the information to the corporation council to look at. I emailed the corporation council, because I wanted to know what was going to be done. It's October. I have not heard anything. When, the point that was made, when we come up to the podium, this is only three minutes that we have. During your time, please try to address some things. The other corporation council that was here before, that was a darn good corporation council. I don't care what anybody says, it's my opinion. He responded back. He even worked with the new alderman that came on board, but he responded back, and he responded back in a way that we could hear.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Carroll.
Good evening, everyone. So, first of all, I want to thank the Waukegan Public Works for all that they've done, especially in my community, but the issue that I have is, when they're plowing, they like to plow your driveway in. Now, if you know that there's a driveway, because there's a vehicle there, I'm personally speaking from personal experience. I shoveled my driveway. I'm a single mother. I shoveled my driveway. When I went inside, I came back out, the plows had plowed me in, it was snow up to my knees, and I'm like, I literally just shoveled this. I've lived in Beach Park, and now I live in Waukegan for the last five years. The last three years, they didn't do this. This year, they must have a group of new people I don't know. All I'm asking is, be courteous and kind to people when you plow, because I went on Facebook, and I spoke with a guy named Luis Enrique, and he told me that he's a member of the Waukegan Public Works, and what he does is, he moves his plow to the side or straight, so it won't hurt people's driveways, and it won't plow them in. Now, it might be a small issue to you, but as a single mother with children and grandchildren, it's hard for me. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Margaret Carrasco.
Someone recently sent me an ad announcing a new banquet hall in the eighth ward of Alderman. Lynn Florian is going to open. I don't need to tell everyone how the streets of Waukegan, especially Midlane, my friends in Midlane, how they talk, and things they have to say. Many feel, Lynn, that the beautiful Midlane Encore multiple banquet halls were pushed to closure by you. And the reason why they say that is because, and, correct me if I'm wrong, you requested to have your fundraiser there for free, and you were told no. Was it retaliation? I don't know, but this is what your residents are saying, and Waukegan cops, too. They whisper, and if you check the records, the phone records, that you kept calling, 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 the only one, making complaints about the Midlane banquet halls. So, now we have your amiga, your friend, how coincidental, is opening up a banquet hall in your ward. The perception by some is that you did that to eliminate the competition for her. Tragically, the site that her friend is opening up, as we know, is the murder site of Alderman Kirkwood's son. Tragic, horrible. And according to photos, according to eyewitnesses, there was just so much blood around. And there was an investigation, obviously, a very, very long, intense investigation. So, what happens is that, as the specialists explained to me, when you don't immediately remove blood, it then penetrates into the floor, the wall, and there's also stench. There is a specialized process that legally has to take place, special pains, containment, disposal of the blood. And if that was not done by the new owners, that's illegal, and it's a health concern.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Carlos Smith.
My name's Carlos Smith. I live 22, 223, whatever it is, Washington Avenue. Your job is tough. I couldn't do your job, because I'd be fighting somebody. But shout out to y'all, because that's why y'all in the positions that y'all in. But I always say when I come up here, that politics is optics. It's the only thing it is. It's the only thing it is. And I know that you guys dealing with, you know, legislation and laws and ordinances and things like that. But this is your biggest platform to promote yourselves. And, and while you're up here, everybody's watching what you're doing. And whether you do something left or right, you're gonna be judged by it. And that's not right. But that's just a position that you guys have took. So you have to be mindful of how you're marketing yourself on this stage, because it matters to the people that voted you in. Because they don't care about what you do, maybe outside, or in a private room, or having a private meeting. But on this stage, you have an opportunity to present your best self, and you have an obligation to do that. And the moment that you fail, the moment that you drop that, or the moment that you may mess up, because you will, because you're a human being, you have to recover that. You have to find a way to fix that. Don't ignore it by saying it does not matter. Because Waukegan is a small, big city, and you represented to the highest power. But, the problem is, is that's not always gonna feel good. That's not always gonna be thankful. It's not always gonna be gracious. It's not always gonna be feeling, like you want to come here every first Monday. You not always want to do it. But you have a job to market yourself in the best way, and I want to encourage you to do that. Because I'm watching you as a young guy, come here and watch these, watch these, because maybe I want to come up here one day. Maybe I want to be an alderman one day. Maybe I want to be the mayor one day. But everything you do can discourage or encourage me to do that. Also want to applaud Chris for coming up with that, uh, PowerPoint. It's great marketing. It's great explaining what's happening in the city in a visual way, because some people may not know. We gotta do more of that. It should be a weekly correspondence where you guys are talking to the community just like that. Marketing, selling, because you gotta sell yourself to, to remain in that seat. So I wanted to encourage you guys on that, alright? Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, that concludes the audience portion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item four, consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial, and would be approved by one motion. If any one board member wishes to have a separate vote on any item, it would be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item 4A. Item 4A, approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, November 17, 2025. 4B, approve 2026 city council meeting schedule. 4C, approve vendor payments dated December 1, 2025 totaling $4,418,984.85. Item 4D, motion to approve, ratify regular payroll dated November 28, November 28, 2025 in a total amount of $2,100,175,073. $175.73. Uh, I'm sorry. Item E, motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll, PDHBB and CT cash out and final payout November, dated November 28, 2025 in a total amount of $32,769,086. Item 4F, resolution approving reclassification of funds for the Patrick Engineer, for the Phase One Engineering Services and Utility Upgrades for the Washington Street Quarter Item 4G, resident approving award of the Fiscal 2026 Sidewalk Program to TCD Concrete Works, Inc. for a not to exceed amount of $174,126. Item 4H, motion to renew Cornerstone Government Affairs, Inc. appointed to state and federal lobbyists for a two-year contract, $10,000 per month. Item 4I, resolution approving an agreement with CD M. Smith for our risk and resilience assessment per section 2-48458, parentheses I, parentheses for professional services for not to exceed amount of $59,500. Item 4J, resolution authorizing approving the purchase of police department patrol vehicles from Kerry Motors for an amount not to exceed $454,540, and the outfitting emergency equipment for the vehicles from Harvey Communications, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $124,466.40. Item 4K, uh, resolution authorizing approval of the purchase of air filtration systems from Rossman Enterprises, Inc., DBA, Magnet Group Joint Purchasing Cooperative. Item 4L, resolution authorizing approving and spending authority to procure professional services from Cybernet LLC to $100,000. Any items to be removed?
Uh, I don't want to remove it, Mayor, but I'd like to question on item H about the Cornerstone Government Affairs, Inc.
Yes, sir.
I thought we were gonna get a report or a presentation on, from them about what they've done, what their...
We, we, we have. There was one sensitive item they were working on, but we have from the federal and state level, basically CNN, CN. But yes, I'll get them here, I promise.
Alright, cool. Thank you.
I know they were, huh? They, they came to, they came, they were at the committee, but I'll get them to council, because my, I think we got some good news.
Cool. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. There's a motion, motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Dunneworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Items, items five, monthly treasury report, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Hayes. Any questions to the monthly treasury report?
No, this is, this treasury report is for October. We're always a month, we're always a month behind, because some of the checks aren't cashed, and we haven't balanced out, so this is for October. And it's been filed with the clerk, Janet Kilkelly, and it's on our website. Any questions, please contact me. Thank you.
No further questions. Roll call, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Oh, I, I had a motion.
Yeah, Newsom and Hayes.
Yeah. Alderman Newsom.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Dunneworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Guzman.
Oh, Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item six, motion to reconsider authorizing the finance department to execute a professional service agreement with MGT Impact Solutions for the purpose of continuing professional services for the amount not to exceed $67,000, and for a time period not to extend beyond May 26, 2026. As a motion by Alderman Felix.
Mayor, could I, I'd like to hold this over, with Alderman Guzman being absent. Take it up at the second meeting, next meeting in December.
We might have a...
So a motion to reconsider, we have... So that's fine, as long as we approve the motion to reconsider tonight, because the time limit would be the, the meet, meeting immediately following
Yeah.
the last meeting, so...
Procedurally, it just needs to be on the agenda, right? And then we can hold it over?
But, yeah, but I, the motion to reconsider, it's here tonight, and supposed to be voted on as far as the reconsidering. The actual item, I don't have a problem holding over.
Okay. So this is not, this is not a...
This is just to reconsider it. This is not to actually vote on it.
There's two parts, there's two parts that would have to be done. First, it would be the motion to reconsider.
It's this.
Which is, which is this. And then the second part, you could hold over, which would be to actually approve the item.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Just want to make sure we're not voting to retain the individual. We're just voting to reconsider.
There will be two parts. So the first thing is the motion to reconsider, and then, I would assume, then you'll make a request to hold over, and then hold over to the next meeting.
No, because the, if this, this, the only motion here is the motion to reconsider. There is no motion to approve.
Well, it's a motion, it's, it's combined into one, but I have no problem, you can hold it over.
So once you reconsider the motion, it's back on the agenda.
As long as we do the motion to reconsider tonight.
But if we, what if we vote on the reconsider, and it doesn't pass?
Then it's over. Then it's over.
So we do that first, then...
Then you do that first, that's why you have to do that first, correct.
Okay.
And Felix, someone on the, the no side had to make the motion.
I motion.
There's a motion by Alderman Felix, second by Alderman Newsom. Any questions to the motion?
Just so I'm clear, procedurally...
It's only the motion procedurally to reconsider.
Okay, so we could still vote no if you don't want to reconsider the motion.
Correct, correct.
Sorry.
Excuse me all, but I apologize. I'm gonna recuse myself, I have a personal conflict, business related, and I'm gonna
There's a motion, the second on the floor. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Aye.
Dunneworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton. Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion's passed and carried to reconsider. Now the motion is on the floor for consideration.
Sorry, my mic was off. Now I'd like to make the motion to hold it over.
Motion by Alderman Hayes to hold over, and reason being is for...
The reason, if I have to give one, is because...
No, 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 you know, I was just, I was, I really was talking out loud, but I heard you say you wanted the other alderman.
Yeah, it was just because Alderman Guzman wasn't here, and, and I think everyone should be here for a vote that was contested and is now being reconsidered.
No, I, I hear that. No, no, it wasn't for you to give a reason. I, I was kinda talking out loud when I heard you. Okay. Alright, alright, so the motion is being held over by Alderman Hayes.
Do we have a second and vote on it?
I'll second it.
No, no.
No, no, it's been held over.
Hold over, and it will appear on the next...
It'll be on next, next agenda. Thank you. Uh, item 7A, ordinance granting, sorry, motion granting conditional use permit to establishment and operation of the banquet hall at 2120 North Green Bay Road. Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Felix.
I have a question.
Uh, any questions to the motion?
Yes.
Alderman Felix.
Why, why is it added to this, uh, council meeting and not wait the...
The two weeks.
The two weeks, or...
Yeah, and I, and I... Typically, and I was gonna explain that, Alderman, typically, as we all know, our process wait two weeks. Uh, when this motion came up, when this actual license came up for the banquet hall and the restaurant, it was, it was the understanding that everything was completed. The person that went through all of this process, and this is not for this individual, it's, it is for anyone. When a person gets their business license and liquor license, they're think they are complete. Unfortunately, that just wasn't it. So we went back, corrected that, and that's why it's on this, it was in committee and on the agenda now. And that's why I, I, I had asked to put it on there typically. It is two weeks. And it will continue to be there, and I...
I just want to say, Mayor, that I've been through this process with a lot of businesses. I agree with it. If we can, pass it the same night, because these guys are waiting to start.
Well, let me, and, and I want to just clear, clear up something. So, my point is, for this one, it's not that the two weeks was the issue, it was, I think you had said it earlier, that the per, people think when they get their business license, they are finished with our entire process. And from a banquet hall standpoint, and Noel and I, and, and the builder commissioner, and, and business licensing, we, we're really trying to get a much better process when it comes to some of these things that don't fit into one bucket. And that is my reason here. And for this particular business here, I think we started this, oh, early, late July, and we, and we'd come to find out that, um, for most of us, who probably know this location, it has operated as a banquet hall for many, many, many years. Unfortunately for us, it needs to go through the CUP process. That's just the process that we have. I know we're trying to, we're trying to expedite some of those things and condense some of those things that we move forward. So that's the only reason I did this, because this person here. That doesn't mean we're going to move away from our two-week process. I just think for this particular one, as to how long this young, this particular business owner's been waiting, I just thought it was prudent that we get, we get it going. That's it, Alderman. And I thank you for your understanding, consideration, as it relates to this specific one here. Okay. Um, there's a question by Alderman Newsom.
Um, my question is, why does it need a conditional use permit when it was already established as a banquet hall?
I know Noel was coming up, and I have, I've been through this about many, many different times, and just so everybody understands, I've only known this to be a banquet hall or restaurant-type banquet hall, but unfortunately, Noel has the zoning aspects of it, so we, so it's clear. Noel?
Fortunately, I have the zoning aspect, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, fortunately, yes, fortunate, not unfortunate, I'm sorry, thank you.
Um, so most of the time, a conditional use permit is transferable, as long as the use doesn't stop for six months or more. In this particular case, the original ordinance, which I was not involved with, had specific language saying it was not transferable. It was only for that original user. Um, and that's why we were not able to transfer it.
Mayor...
I know why the language was there, I wasn't involved in it at the time, so I can't speak to it. There were no notes in the file on it or...
I wanted to make sure to let it known that this is not a, like, a special, uh, case. There's many businesses that were waiting four months, six months, and a lot of them were in my ward, a banquet hall as well, four months, five months. So what I'm saying is that this is not a special case, and, you know, we should be doing this for every business. If we can get it done that, that, that month, or that, that meeting, that, we should do that for everyone, not just one specifically. And I want to bring this up, because, uh, Alderman Florian, you had a lot of issues with other, other businesses, banquet halls that were opening up, and for, it had to be for the next meeting, but not this one that's in your ward. So I just want to be, you know, make sure to bring it up, that we should be fair to everyone, and make sure that, um, we do this for everyone. If we can, we, we get it done.
And we will. Thank you, Alderman, and we appreciate that. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Dunneworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, item eight, there being none, closing items. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to echo what the mayor spoke this afternoon or evening regarding the snow pickup, uh, the plowing. Thank you to Public Works. I did have a couple calls, and you all were Johnny on the spot to help those residents. And I want to use this opportunity to, again, speak on the alternate parking. It is very important that you honor or abide by the alternate parking, because especially getting your snow plowed, you need to help us help you get the streets clean. So, um, please, move your cars from side to side. And then also, I've had some calls about the leaf pickup. I know our, uh, Public Works Director is working on that, since we had two early snowfalls, and there are leaves still on the parkways. We're gonna work diligently to make sure, uh, we take care of all those leaves as we have in the past. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Excuse me, um, I just want to mention Reverend DeVos, you know, I didn't grow up with him, um, and, and I, but I did know him, not well, but, and, and I, I really feel badly, because I never made church with him. I never went to service. But I used to slide by there sometimes and, and just sit and talk with him. And he, man, he would always welcome me with that smile and a, and a firm handshake, and we would just sit down and talk like men, and, and because that's what we are, right? And, but anyway, I, I always appreciated him, and, and I'm sorry to hear of his loss. I'm disappointed that I didn't know that he, he had passed, and wasn't aware of services, because I surely would have been there. God bless and rest his soul. statement before, this is, that snowstorm is exactly why these guys can't take vacation in winter time. They're getting their Christmas break, they, they gotta be on tap, on call, because when it's a snow event like that, all hands on deck, right? And people on standby, because one driver can't drive 12, 15 hours, so maybe they have to rotate drivers in and out, which backs up into the summertime, when everybody has to take vacation, and then they're adjusting the resources. The guys that cut the trees now have to dig the hole. The guy that digs the hole now has to go do something else. So it's, it's a constant reas, uh, uh, assignment of resources, a bal, it's a balancing act. And, uh, so like now, if, if somebody, anybody, anybody in Public Works wants to take a day off, they need written permission from the director, no other way possible during the winter, so please keep that in mind. I got a lot of calls, and I think we all did, um, about the, the snow, uh, and cars not moving and so forth, and I was kinda thinking, you know, one of the things we all, everyone struggles with is, how do you do mass communications? Because everybody is not on the internet, everybody on the internet is not on Facebook, and everybody on the internet don't have emails, and we don't have all the emails and blah, blah, and so forth and so on. But what we do have is, and I don't know if we can use it, maybe the chief or the fire chief can answer, uh, we do have an emergency notification system, and maybe in a, in an instance like this, we got this severe weather, we should notify the public that there's a severe weather alert coming, and please move your cars, get your cars off the street. So that's something we should look at. Uh, I don't know what the parameters are about when it's appropriate, when you're allowed to use that emergency notification system, but it seems like it would be a good case for that. The leaves did not get picked up on this last go-around, which was, uh, in the sixth ward. It was scheduled for the, uh, 26th and the 28th. It didn't happen, and now, uh, the leaves are mixed in with the snow, and they're pushed up on, they're out there, and they're not going away. LRS can't pick up the leaves and the snow, so when the snow melts, however long that takes, and I get it, that's when the leaves will get picked up. Uh, in the, uh, you know, a lot of businesses have been impacted by, um, this mass deportation effort and so forth and so on. And I just encourage everyone to please support as best you can our local businesses, and it's, 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 everything's interconnected, interrelated, and so if one business is affected, other businesses are too. So I'm just saying, generally, please support our local businesses in Walkhegan and in the sixth ward. Now, in the sixth ward, we've got 12 restaurants and two bakeries, and I tried to, you know, get to them all. I noticed another one had closed in the sixth ward today, but please visit and patronize your local businesses in our community. I wanna congratulate and welcome my, uh, neighbor and friend Todd Johnson to the Civil Service Commission. I think you're probably number five. We've got a lot of folks from the sixth ward, and, uh, I know Todd, you're gonna do a great job over there. Thank you very much for stepping up to the plate and volunteering to serve, and, uh, congratulations. Uh, duh, 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 duh. Okay, so it was already mentioned about the, and I, I reiterate this for the benefit of those who watch. So we're gonna do a water main replacement starting the week of 12, eight. Chris, is that right? Antonio? Okay, so, starting next Monday, water plane, water main replacement and lead service line replacement on North Avenue from Glen Flora to, uh, Greenwood, and that is gonna affect both sides of the street. Up that way, it's the dividing line between the sixth and seventh wards, so Alderman, Donahworth, and I will both, uh, work together, joint communication going out in that area. And, uh, finally, I just, just take it for what it's worth. Um, audience time. Audience time is your time. Come up here and you can say anything you want, nobody's gonna interrupt you, but it's not the most efficient or effective way to communicate. You're not gonna get a two-way conversation. And while you can say whatever you want, I would suggest that you speak to issues relevant to the city of Walkhegan and things that we have control over. You can say what you have you want. You see, we do, we just listen to you, and that's all you get. If you wanna really, uh, effectively communicate, I suggest you do it one-on-one. You can reach the mayor's office. Everybody knows how to reach me, and you reach me anytime, but a lot of that stuff you wanna talk, talk about needs to go through the mayor, mayor's office or the mayor himself, and then certainly those things pertinent to, uh, Alderman, you should be reaching your Alderman. And don't forget, there's another vehicle for you. WalkheganIL.gov. Recently, the website has been kinda revamped, there's a lot of information there, and if you can't find it there, pick up the phone, all right? Thank you, have a good night.
Alderman Donahworth.
Thank you. I'm just reiterating what the other Alderman has said about the alternate parking and the, uh, and the snow removal and, and things like that. It was, uh, it was pretty hectic out there for a while, but then people, people got the idea, and they did, they did move things. But I think we need to look at something here that, um, you know, was done in the past, and it, and it has, it has worked, you know, notify everybody, um, signage on all these streets, two inches or more, you gotta move your vehicle. And then, um, if you're parked wrong, then you get towed. And, um, that way the, uh, city can come through, and they can do their plowing, because if you get every, every violation, every alternate parking, I mean, maybe there's 10, 12, 20 of them in the city, you're able to have the officers go out and ride them and tow them, and now you can come through and you can do your plowing. And you get your plowing done, and then you can come back later in the day, and you finish it. Because, um, I know I had a couple alternate parking on my street, and it's, um, you know, they got three feet of snow around their cars, right on my street, and they finally moved them today. So now we have two big humps on the street, and, uh, they definitely weren't out there to shovel those and get them off the street and, um, everything, but just, uh, please be mindful. Try to get your vehicles off the streets. You know, park them in your driveway, I mean, do whatever you can do. And then, um, uh, with the leaves and stuff, we've had, you know, some, some bad luck here. I've heard we might have had a little bit of problems with some of the leaf trucks. They had, somebody said, somebody, a couple of them broke or something, and they had to, had to, had to redo them, um, repair them. I'm, I have, I have the Bonnie Brook people that, uh, they have leaves up to their ears, and, uh, they were finally through there the last couple days and, and did a lot of that cleaning up over there. But, uh, there are definitely oaks over there, and, uh, you know, it's really beautiful when it comes down, but there's a lot of leaves there also. And, um, just, you know, keep up with the city staff every time we give a call, talk to somebody. Everything is great. And, um, just, just keep your heads up, eyes open. And, uh, thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I have a couple of things to announce. There's going to be a Vista Town Hall over at CLC on Wednesday night from, um, 7:00 to 8:30. Um, it's being organized by a couple of the nonprofits. We're just trying to get information out about what's going on with the hospital, where we're currently at, what the future may look like. It's gonna be in the Eleanor Murky Center Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:30. Also, next Thursday, the 11th, is the Intergovernmental Committee Meeting. I think all of you received an email about that, but, um, that will be at noon, and that's also going to be at CLC. I think it may be in the downstairs. I don't know what they call that room, right off of Genesee though, um, because I think the Eleanor Murky Center is being used for something else. So that one may be downstairs, but that's at noon, um, on the 11th. I missed the tree lighting by just a minute. I turned the corner, just as you said, light the tree. I didn't plan on it taking so much longer to get downtown with the weather, so anyway. But the tree looked beautiful, and there were actually people that came out in spite of the weather, so I'm sorry I missed that. Last Wednesday was, um, uh, Michael Morales's Thanksgiving senior luncheon. I went over on, at lunchtime and helped serve that. That was a great event. I know Ray Ray had his on, on the same day, you know, in North Chicago. I, I supported him with money. I wasn't able to be two places at one time. But thank you both for supporting our seniors and, and providing them with a Thanksgiving feast. I wanna, uh, correct something I said when Alderman Turner was talking about leaves in the road. This tells you what AI can do to you sometimes, because I, I Googled, does Walkhegan have a leaf ordinance? And AI said, we do. It said, we had a leaf ordinance and a snow ordinance, and apparently we do not, because I called both Public Works and Code Enforcement, it's, where is this ordinance? And we do not have one. I think it's just been something we assumed we have. So I think we should get an ordinance on the books about putting leaves in the streets, snow in the street, grass in the street. All of that is not good for our sewer systems, motorcycles, there's lots of reasons why we should not be putting those things in the street. So hopefully everyone else agrees with that, and we can get an ordinance on the books. So, um, I apologize, Alderman Turner, for misleading you into believing we had one, but that tells you you need to check AI when you, um, Google stuff. And then lastly, I, I wanna read, this is, it's just a, a column, or a paragraph or so. You know, we've had a lot of drama in the last several months about, with ICE and immigration, and I do believe these people are coming back. They're saying that in March, I think they're, they're wimps and they can't handle the cold apparently, so they're gone for the winter. Well, and plus, as someone pointed out, people aren't out as, and about as much in the winter, so maybe they figure they're gonna wait till the weather gets nice, come back with a vengeance. But I, I've struggled a lot with how do people who call themselves Christians support this immigration stuff? And David French writes for the New York Times, and, and he addressed this issue exactly. And he said, "A Christian answer to the cruelty of corruption of Trumpism has finally arrived." The American-born Pope Leo the 14th, I think it is, um, and the US Conference of Catholic Bishops are denouncing President Trump's cruel roundups of immigrants in stark contrast to the overwhelming support he's received from his, David French's, fellow evangelical Christians. In a statement approved 216 to 5, the bishops rebuked those who are creating a climate of fear and anxiety among immigrants through dehumanizing rhetoric and violence, and indiscriminate mass deportation. Leo has also taken the lead on this issue, reminding Christians that Jesus clearly states in the scripture that people would be judged on how they treat the foreigner. Leo has questioned whether those who oppose abortion but approve of the inhumane, inhuman treatment of immigrants are actually pro-life. The Pope's stance is not partisan. It is a moral position, what Martin, Martin Luther King Jr. called "serving the conscience of the state." "In the great moral struggle of our times, the Catholic Church's reminder that every human being should be treated with dignity and respect should matter." I'm gonna say that again. "In the great moral struggle of our times, the Catholic Church's reminder that every human being should be treated with dignity and respect should matter. Unless the values behind Trumpism are defeated, our culture will continue to slide into cruelty and depravity." Thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to say one more thing. I have never held a fundraiser. I have, um, um, provided all my own funds for my campaigns. I can prove that. The only calls I've ever made about the banquet hall were when residents called and complained. The banquet hall at Midlane is a little unique, because it's completely surrounded by a neighborhood, which most banquet halls are not. And, uh, my only opposition to them was creating a nightclub there, not anything to do with banquets, weddings, birthday parties. I wanted them to be good neighbors, and, um, there had been a nightclub there years ago, and for those of you that might remember, there was actually a murder in the parking lot. My neighbors that came to me, I don't know who talks to Margaret, but the ones that came to me said they did not want a nightclub in our neighborhood, and I agreed with them. So that was the only thing I stood up against, was the nightclub coming to Midlane, so.
Did Margaret Karroska was making stuff up again? I did.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Nope, not in the least. Uh, just a few quick comments. Uh, the individuals who stood up during audience time and said that this is our opportunity to respond to the audience members, that's, it's a good point, and your point is well-taken. So to address a couple of the items that came up tonight, uh, I often pass my time, uh, in the interest of brevity, uh, efficiency, and a lot of people up here get tired of listening to me talk. But nonetheless, I will say, and I have said this now for a while, but not as long as others on the council, I, liquor licenses in my mind are, are falling out of favor very, very quickly. And I have been saying that now for several months. It's, it's one thing if you're opening a restaurant. It's one thing, even some of the banquet halls, yes. But a liquor store, on a, any liquor store, really, um, I, it's not, it's not, this is not a blanket statement, but we have liquor stores next to churches, across the streets from schools. We have liquor stores next to liquor stores. And as I have said, we have a lot of issues in the city, but finding alcohol is not one of them. So, uh, the point about liquor stores, I agree. We don't need any more of them. And I would encourage people to not come before us and submit those applications, because I just don't see how they benefit the city, other than some sales tax revenue, which I think we can get creative and find elsewhere. I don't think we need it from liquor sales, because I don't see how it benefits the community. So, um, to the individuals that raised the, the issue of liquor licenses in the city, I agree with you.
Me too.
Corporation counsel, um, I don't know Corporation counsel's obligation to necessarily respond to people that email them, but, uh, it, it's not, it's not a knock on counsel. I, I just don't know that they, that they have to do that. They're also very busy advising a lot of other areas of the city. But if you have specific questions, you can send them to any one of us, and we will gladly pass it through and, and get you an answer. So I, I would be more than happy to do that. I know for a fact that the attorneys, um, are, they're, they're working hard, and they're trying to, um, put out a lot of fires, so to speak. So, um, leaves, I'll, I'll say the same thing that I say when people call and, um, email, which is, we can't control the weather. I, I forget, season, you know, year after year, now, I've been at this for a few years, I, I forget how much of an issue leaf pickup is in the city. It really just brings out the best in people, and I can't help but just, you know, you try your hardest to help, but you just, you, you can't wave a magic wand and get someone's leaves picked up. It just doesn't work like that. So I, Public Works, I would argue, we have the best Public Works program, um, in the state. And they do, they are so responsive. They are on it, they are doing their best. They're picking up the slack when LRS can't get out to do the work. So just bear with us. Um, we, we can't control when the leaves fall, we can't control when it snows, and these events are totally out of our hands. So everyone's doing their best. Alderman Turner's point is a really good one, about the fact that Public, Public Works can't take the time off in the winter, because it's all hands on deck, therefore in the summer, when people think the trees aren't being trimmed and grass isn't being cut quickly enough, and I'm, I'm one of those people who complains, Chris, you'll attest to that. The, the Public Works employees are on a, on a much-earned vacation, many of them. So, um, I just wanna throw that out there and, uh, say that Alderman Turner made a good point. Plowing driveways. At the end of your, this happens to me too. If the end of your driveway, I'm gonna regret this, is plowed in, I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old that I will bring with me, and I will come dig out the end of your driveway. So 847-390-2697. That's child labor. I will bring both of them, and, uh, I will come help. So do not hesitate to call me, but I'm gonna do it after I dig out the end of my driveway. That's all I have. Thanks.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, thank you for the acknowledgement of the DeVos family. He truly made significant deposits in a great deal of everyone's life. And I've been over there to visit at the church while they were working, and I'm still in touch with them about their future project. And it's good to, to acknowledge that. And also wanna thank all the organizations. I think we passed out at least 400 turkeys. I am still exhausted. Harvest Market, UMA, uh, Justice Ringo Foundation, just so many they gave. And I just appreciate the giving spirit that's in this city. Thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Martinez.
Thank you, Madam, City Clerk and Officer of the Council. I'll, I'll be very brief here.
I'll be very brief here. This is pretty much piggyback of the Alderman with the, with the snow, please make sure that after two inches of snow, your vehicle should be parked in your driveway. It makes it very difficult for emergency vehicles to try to get in and get out. And I, piggyback to what Alderman and Donaworth said, maybe we should bring back the old way of towing these cars if they're in the way. I mean, this is, this is a problem, and, you know, a slap in the hand is, a wrist is not gonna help. So I think we'd be, maybe put our heads together and also see what we can do and revisit this again, because it is just the beginning of winter, and from what they're saying and predicting, a lot of snow for this winter, so I'd be more than willing to talk to anybody about maybe bringing that back, but I also want to bring that out there. Also, of course, everyone already knows, everyone knows about the leaf, right now it is suspended for the time being. I have been in contact with Stephanie with LRS, and also Chris Garland, the Director of Public Works. As soon as we get more information, I will let my constituents know. I have no problem, I could be called, if you need to get a hold of them back, it'd be 847-390-2689. And also, I also want to talk briefly about the, you know, being the holidays, it kind of touches people differently. At this time, there's, the suicide rate is high because of the holidays, and people have a lot on their mind. So I just ask my constituents, everyone, please, look out for your own mental health, you know? And if you do know someone or you need help, there's always the Suicide Hotline, call 988, you can call them, and the information they give you will be confidential. So just take that, beat that out there. I'll ask that my neighbors to please be safe, be mindful, and so have a great winter. Thank you. Good night.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you. Want to mention a few things. I did also go to the Mikey's Annual Thanksgiving for the seniors. I was happy to sponsor some of the beverages, and also go help out during my lunchtime. It was good, it was a good venue, I think it was the first time he did it at the Laker Center, or whatever it's called now, I think it's Laker Center. Saw the seniors dancing, there was the volunteers as well, the youth was helping, helping out. So I think it was one of the, every year it keeps getting better, so shout outs to Mike for doing a great event for the seniors. Some sad news, in the fourth ward in Waukegan, we had our, whenever a resident healed a press, Mantojas, pass away. I mentioned her before, we actually gave her a, something with the mayor, we gave her something together that, acknowledging her 95 years lived, and sadly she has passed away, but she leaves a great family, and also a, it goes to show again how some of our residents treat their families. Her daughter, Evelyn, has treated her daughter, her mother with, with love. I've visited her so many times, she felt, I saw that she was well taken care of, so may she rest in peace. Regarding the snow, I, I agree with Alderman Hayes. Well, I wish I could wave a wand and just have things taken care of out of the way, but sometimes it doesn't happen that way. I got a call at 8:00 in the morning, by 10:00, it was already taken care of. You know, it just happens that way when, when these things happen. But of course, you know, I'm glad that people are calling and giving us, or giving me at least, their concerns. But for the most part, I would say, the city pinpointed it right away, as soon as, as I was thinking about it, we need to kind of give messaging, how do we plow better? And we have to, we have to move these cars out of the way. I spoke to the mayor, you know, some of our signage is outdated, so we have to maybe remove or put some new signage that says over two inches, or I don't know how many inches that is, but to make sure those signs are visible, and we have to give some citations or tow some cars away, so to get that, that, I get people used to the process. Sometimes, over the years, things, you know, people stop doing things, and the administrations start, stop doing things, and it gets, gets something like this. So we're, part of the rebuilding part is also kind of enforcing some of the things that we had in place before, or new things that we can have in place. I'll give an example, as resident parking in my ward, people, they didn't get citations for a while in these specific streets. After, after a while, now they're getting citations, and I go through those streets, I see resident parking, resident parking stickers all in those three streets. So we have to just start doing it again, and I think that's something that we are doing. I think the mayor's giving us at least the freedom to approach our police officers and kind of, hey, you know, can we do this? And they have, they do respond well. So we might have to give some, get some towing done, and I believe we might have to start with, of course, notification to our residents. And we have, as you can see. What Alderman, Alderman Turner stated about the mass notifications, we actually do have mass notifications, it's called Code Red, and I think the only other department that can use it, I believe, is our Public Works. So maybe, Mayor, we can have our IT team work with our Public Works, and as last time I met with the IT regarding this, they stated that Public Works had, they know about it, but maybe they need a refresher, and something that we can kind of like push, push our departments to, to, to work on, because we have the ability to do that. We can also, if we get enough support with the city, with the Alderman, is, we can also do another vendor for mass notifications that are not necessarily Public Works, is more of other things, and it could be geo-targeted, so those things are out there. So if someone would want to support that, we can definitely work on that together. Want to mention also, in terms of how our city runs, we are legislators. We, we, we work two ways. We can have, we can work with the mayor, because he administrates, he's the administrator of the, he knows executive, he makes sure things get done. So we can either have a policy in place, or we can legislate something to get done. We can do both. I think we're, we're doing a lot of it now with this administration, that's why we don't, you don't really see a lot of things come forward, because the mayor's just, the administration's just working towards it. A big example is the licensing department. Everything, well, not everything, but most of the time, everything's pretty smooth. You don't see the back and forth. The people go through the process, and they get their license, and they have to go through other, like the Planning and Zoning Commission, P&amp;D Commission, and they have to go through the process, but it's a lot smoother now than before. So it's just a testament of how we're doing things now. So, but that's administering, that's the administration part, they're, put people in place to make sure these things are smoother. So you don't really, I don't, I don't really have to anymore go with the business and say, hey, you have to go do this, do this, do this, kind of just push them through the process. It's being done now effortlessly, I would say. And that's a good thing, that we don't have, you know, a lot of bickering in here, they're just going through the process. That's it for me, thank you.
Before we go, Alderman Hayes, you said something about these liquor deals. I was thinking while you were talking. Next week, is Juan here? Juan, we have Juan, Business Licenses, I'm gonna have a full report for you, a breakdown of our liquor licensing, so we can understand where we're at. And if I'm not mistaken, since, at least since I've been here, Alderman, we haven't issued a liquor store license. The last liquor store license that was issued, was issued for, I'm gonna give you the, the gas station at Glen Rock and Belvedere is the last liquor store. But I want to give you a breakdown, so you'll have, I think you and a host of others are gonna be quite surprised where Waukegan stands versus the rest of the county. But I'll have that for you, so you can have, and that better, we'll be able to address those things. All right? With that being said, everybody have a great week. Motion, motion by Alderman Hayes, second by Alderman Bolton, to adjourn. All those in favor? Motion's passed and carried.